I imagine they
Hello.
Hello.
I'm here.
So I noticed that there are several attendees here. If you can, please do me a favor. If you go to file on the GoToMeeting program, you can, there's a thing that says edit your name and email. If you can, please click on that. So we know who's speaking at any point.
Okay, you say file?
Yeah.
It's not important.
No, I mean, that doesn't matter to me, but that doesn't show up. I just put my city email.
Councilor Payena, you do have a forum now, so whenever you want to start, you can.
Great. Hello, Councilor Plant. Welcome to the City Council's second web meeting. So I think the agenda was sent to everybody. Give me one moment so I can access it. Just, you know, reflect or pray that our community stays safe and that we're able to move forward to this crisis. Thank you. And so, you know, moving forward, there's only one item which is tabled. Does anyone want to take out of table matters?
To move to.
Twenty-six twenty, city charter review.
So.
Okay, so motion's been made. All those in favor of taking that item of tabled matter. So we can't do it like that. We have to call on each individual person so they can take a vote. So Councilor Rodriguez, how do you vote to take this out of table matters?
Yes.
Councilor Plant?
Yes.
I also vote yes. So we have item twenty-six twenty charter review. So one of the things that we talked about at our last meeting is that we were going to look through the charter from section one to section three and see if there was at any point something that we would like to change. So I am going. So I am going to, so this, I figured we might as well take this section by section. In section one, were there any comments or thoughts?
Before we get going, is Mr. Vasquez on the line?
Yes, I am.
I just, before we get going on this, I'd just like to know what the ground rules are. This is the first, hey, Candace, first for all of us. So this, is this being, is it, can anybody watch at this particular point in the public? Can the public view this?
This meeting is, it's open to the public that the, by multiple forums. So right now it's being transmitted live via Facebook Live, YouTube. It is also accessible by the application. So anyone who has the application, they can access and view what we're doing. Also, channel twenty-two is showing this right now. Additionally, if a person calls, there's a phone number that they could dial in, which has been shared and is part of the publication for the meeting. It has been shared on our Facebook page. So it's accessible to the community. The previous meeting, just by, on Facebook Live, we had approximately ninety-four people that joined. So it was very, very wide attended digitally, of course. And data, we're trying to find out how many people watched it by YouTube as well as the other mediums. And, you know, it will give me a report how many people called in as well. I don't know how many calls came in.
All right. I just wanted to know how that was playing out. So yeah, I can actually see it now on, on Facebook Live, so we're good. Got it. Thank you.
Okay. So moving forward, so we're at section one, which is the incorporation form of government, powers of the city. Are there any comments or questions on that?
No.
Okay, so, so the only, you know, comment that, you know, that I wanted to make on that was just to see if there was any interest within the committee to have a conversation about potentially moving from this form of government where you have a, a strong mayor and a council to one that's similar to Lowell where you have, you know, a mayor, a council, and a city manager. I'm not necessarily saying that, you know, potentially this could be something that we would want to push for next year. But I do think, seeing that there's a lot of cities that are sort of heading in or that have already headed in that direction, that, that there's something to at least have that conversation. So if, if there's interest, I would like to see. I know Councilor Rodriguez, you're, you know, you're part of the, I think you're one of the, in the executive board of MMA. And, you know, I want to see if we could sort of invite them over or invite somebody over to our next meeting to kind of like have a discussion on what, you know, potentially that could look like and what we would have to get done. But I'd only do it if, I know this is like a, sort of like a pet project of mine, something that I'm very interested in, but if other members of the, of this committee aren't, then, you know, I can sort of take that through some other forum.
How do you want to just interject as you raise a hand, you can say, how do you want to handle that, Mr. Chair?
Just, just, yeah, that, that works for me. Councilor Plant?
So I just want to make sure that as we go through this, that there are parameters and, and, and limits as to how far we go. A changing the style of government is not, I don't believe, a curfew, a charter review. That is a completely different animal. I'm not saying it's a good thing or a bad thing, and it's probably a conversation worth having. We should revisit this periodically. But I don't believe that a charter review is the place for that. It's an entirely separate piece of legislation that requires, that requires a vote by the people. It's like an initiative petition, if you will. It's a whole separate animal. So I don't, I think it has a lot of merit. I'm just not sure. And we can get, I think, more clarification from the attorney. But my sense is that this is probably not the vehicle by which we want to change the, the style of government.
Sure, so I mean, I, I don't think since this would essentially be, to do that would be changing the charter. I don't necessarily think that it's completely off, off topic. But again, as I said, it's something that I am highly interested in.
I'm sorry, some of this clocked on Mr. Rodriguez, and it's very distracting. There we go, I'm back. Thank you.
Right there. Yeah, I see that too. It's, it's gonna go on a few, a few more times. So, so yeah, I'll move on. So next we have section two, separation of powers. I mean, if there's no comments on that, I think this is probably the, the big chunk of, of things. I know I have some, some recommendations, but let's start with section three, three point one, composition, eligibility, election, and term. Are there any comments related to that? Council President, I think, I remember speaking to you, and I think that you might have had some comments when it came to composition. I just want to make sure that I open the floor to you if you want to express those ideas before we move forward.
Yes. Let me, what I'll do, let me see what I can, I can do this. I would like to actually do something a little bit different here. And I'm going to share my screen like I did earlier. So, yes. I will walk you through what I have. I don't know if that's visible enough. Does that help? Is that too small?
I can see it.
I can see it.
Okay, so what I've done, at least for my own purposes, is that I, I've selected, as you can see here, this is the changes that I am proposing. When you look at composition in section eight, three point one, composition, eligibility, election, and term. So in composition, I am suggesting that we change nine to eleven members for the Lawrence City Council. I know that it might be shocking to some folks to hear this, but I do think that the city needs, the city council needs to be changed from, from nine to eleven for the reason that we've had difficulty in, in several committees when it comes to, you know, moving documents forward. And I am, for instance, not going to remain in the council forever. You guys are not going to remain in the council forever. I think that the numbers in the subcommittee should not remain as a number, but instead the committee members, the committee should be, you know, an odd number. So a decision could be made on items that need to be moved ahead. And this has happened multiple times, you know, ever since I became a councillor for the last eight years. And I feel that the government should not be stopped, but rather we should be able to allow, you know, you know, things to, to continue to happen. And having a four members, if two agree on an issue, two do not agree on the issue, then the document remains there. And I think that if we are able to add two more councillors, that will give, you know, any future presidency opportunity to appoint five councillors to each committee. And as a result, they will be able to go ahead. So that's my take on it. So this is what, this is a, if you see what I'm scrolling at, that red line, that's what is amended.
Councilor Plant or Councilor Rodriguez, let's see if I can see you. Oh, I can see you guys now. Oh, Councilor, Councilor.
Councilor Reyes is also.
Yeah, well, thank you for joining us. I see you. Does anyone have any comments to what Council President's suggestion?
Yes, I just have a question. So who's gonna be elected, the two new members?
So very similarly to the, this, you know, the way that we get elected today will be an elected, elected by the, by the voters. So my, my intention is that if we move forward on the next section, we currently have six members representing district. My recommendation will be that it becomes a seven member for the district. And instead of having three members at large, we will essentially have four members that will be known as councillor at large. So it will be in addition to a district councillor and in addition to a at-large councillor to ensure that representation both at the district and at the at-large level remains, you know, same.
So.
Councilor Rodriguez?
So I have to do through you, Mr. Chair. That have to do with, that also have to do with the redistribution of the districts. So ones that happen at the, at the State House, we're gonna have to propose to have seven districts in the city of Lawrence instead of six.
Yeah.
That won't. So that won't be, we won't be able to do it until we have that, that seven district in place, which is gonna take place, I believe, next year.
So, so I think that any, any, any portion of the charter that we wish to amend doesn't, doesn't have to be amended all at once. So we could actually say, we wish for this to be implemented starting, you know, twenty, one twenty twenty now. So let's say twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-eight. We could, we could give a date. So it's not like we vote on it, the legislature approves it, it has to become effective immediately. No, I think that we are in the right timing to, you know, even consider this idea simply because of the census. As we know, the districts will be redrawn regardless whether we, we move forward with this measure or not because it goes based on the population. So we will be going through redistricting at the city level, state, and, you know, even federal government will be doing redistricting for the congressional offices. So I think that the fact that we are having the census now, we're having this discussion now, it goes hand in hand because it's not going to have a much larger impact than what we already will have two years from now when we get redistricted from our own districts.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Councilor.
I don't necessarily disagree with the idea. I'm just saying that we probably gonna have to rethink about the districts because in case that we have, we add another district, that means that we're gonna have to wait for the redrawn and then the new, and the new redistricting that is gonna happen next year, otherwise. But if we think abroad and we said to get to eleven members, we'd not necessarily have to change the district. We maintain the six district and have the five at large. And then that gonna have us, that wanna take us to eleven as well. And, and the distribution have to be, have to be necessarily based on, on district, but instead based on city council large. With that said, I will also, I would like to add that having five councillors at large can bring other issues. Can bring all the issues as well, which basically Lowell is going through right now. And, and, and that's something that we gotta think about as well. So we, basically Lowell is going from having all districts at large to have districts because of the configuration of the, of the city council or the body, not necessarily showing the reflection of the community. And, and basically we're doing the opposite. That could lead us to issues that Lowell is facing today. So doing it with our large councillors. So it's something that is.
Council, Mr. Vasquez, yeah, go ahead.
You, Mr. Chair, I am not opposed to the idea of being, you know, five at large and six district. I just, that, when I was doing the training, I thought was, oh, we are already going to be redistricting regardless. So probably if the, the council thinks that this is a good idea, let's assume we move forward with it. As I go, since they go hand in hand, why not do it? But I am definitely not opposed to having five at large.
So let's move forward with the idea of having eleven councillors. How we move forward with that, how we determine those councillors, that's something that we can definitely discuss later.
Councilor Plant?
Yeah, so a couple of quick thoughts. One is, I don't mind the eleven. It's the rationale that kind of troubles me. If we have nine members right now and members who are committed enough to attend the meetings, there wouldn't really, according to this logic, there wouldn't be a need to have eleven members. So we wouldn't have the problem of not getting quorum for their, for a variety of, of meetings. So it's a question of, do we have, do we, when we, when we decided we're gonna be on the council over the past, the council president mentions that we, it's been going, going now for at least eight years, whatever, however long it's been, that we need to have some consistency in our, in our, in our quality of our members. We're gonna make the commitment. So that's one. But the, on the other side of it, if the council president were to say that because our population has increased and because if we have more individuals serving on the council, we might be a bit more attentive to individuals. So rather if, if, and I don't know what the numbers are going to be, I mean, I, you know, a popular number say that we're, it's gonna be, you know, between eighty and a hundred thousand. Who knows where that's gonna land? But over time, you know, our population is increasing and to have, and to have more, more members might be more responsive. The last, with that comes their costs, of course, and we're paying salaries for two more people, and that's another, it's something we have to consider. But the other thing as well is, is the makeup that, you know, Mr. Rodriguez was talking about, which was, you know, do we, do we, if, I think it's, I think the district councillors, and I don't mean to offend my at-large colleagues, but get the brunt of the, of the, of the constituent calls. Because we identify more closely with them and we campaign more specifically. And I'm not saying that, that the at-large are not responsive. I'm not saying that. But I'm just saying that ultimately.
Because I get like three to five calls a day, so.
They identify, identify more with that. So I'm just, you know, from my perspective. So you may, you may want to have maybe more at-large councils because the Voting Rights Act that was switched back in the year two thousand, two thousand and one, and what Mr. Rodriguez is talking about Lowell, they're looking at more of having at large, district councils versus at-large councillors. So, but our situation may be different than Lowell in some respects. I know what they're going through there. But as we're having this discussion, I just want to throw those, those little bits of information out. I haven't decided but how we should go on it. But I think the council president makes a good point. It depends on which argument he's making.
Right. And I, so, so for the first argument, it was actually, because you should, so let's, let's say, you know, I'm proud of the councillors that we have, and I think we all have very different perspective on ideas. But oftentimes we have seen in subcommittees that there's, you know, a vote on two-two. So items are not moving one way or the other. And I think that it's important that if we wish to defeat an item, the item is defeated, or if we wish to approve it, the item is approved and sent up to the full council. So I'm not arguing that it has to go one way or the other versus that a decision essentially should be made. And if, if it continues to always be two-two, it will, it becomes challenging to, to do that. With that, I, I, I feel that if we added a fifth member, it will break that potential tie. And, you know, and population is another concern. So, you know, I think that, that you guys understand the logic behind it. So how we get to the eleven, I don't have a problem.
So here's a suggestion. I think that there's, like, I, I don't know where I am on the, personally, I don't know where I am on the issue. But I, I see, I think I'm more in line, not so much on the, on the committee, the bureaucracy part. Because I think, you know, adding members, just for the bureaucracy to be better, doesn't necessarily connect with me, but I, I do, I, I do understand the point that more likely than not, the population is gonna be a lot higher than what it was ten years ago. So probably a need for more, to ensure that everyone's having adequate representation. So perhaps, you know, the next step would be to ask the city attorney to, you know, sort of give us a, necessarily a recommendation, but like give us some pros and cons, you know. She probably has a better idea of, you know, how other cities that have, you know, what, what are the pros and cons of having eleven councillors? As opposed to, you know, waiting four or five years to have one councillor be in the district and one councillor be at large. You know, I think maybe getting that, that, that piece of information or just a, a little research being done there might help us sort of move forward in that decision. What does that sound?
So I just want to add something.
Councilor Rodriguez, and then Councilor Reyes.
Essentially, what I'm saying on this is like, perhaps, some of the issue that we have, we have currently is the quorum. So we need three members to be able to have quorum on any subcommittee meeting. So with our five member, only three members are still, only three member have to have, have to be there to have quorum. So that's all that problem. So that's, that's one issue that is, that could be, that could be solved because, I mean, there's the same amount of people that have to be there today to have quorum in any subcommittee. If we have eleven member, adding, adding two more, that's, it's gonna be the same then. Only three people, but subcommittee is gonna have, instead of four, gonna have five. So that's gonna solve one problem there. The only thing that I'm also concerned is that having the, having any, any vote that any other, other communities that, what they're facing right now is having a super majority vote on any important issue that we actually believe on or that, that, that could be a challenge because perhaps you need seven to be able to have the super majority. Right now you have six, you need six for super majority. But with a configuration of eleven, you actually need seven members to be able to, to get super majority on any type of issue. Monetary wise and, and money, money issues, approval and stuff like that. That's, that's something to think about as well. But.
But that's why.
It go either way depending on, on what the issue is.
Councilor Reyes?
Well, Councilor Rodriguez took my question, it basically was the same, but I also have a question for Councilor Plant. If he was the one mentioning, if I'm not mistaken, that Lowell has eleven. Because it's like you say, we do need to do more research. I like the idea. I think, you know, it would have, it would have put us in a better position versus the subcommittee meeting. But I think, you know, it's like Councilor Rodriguez was saying, then we wouldn't need it seven instead of six, whenever we need to pass an item.
Right, so, so what I would. One second, Councilor Rodriguez. So what I'd like to advise the committee is asking the city attorney to do some research on this and give us more, like some pros and cons. And I think that's definitely a potential con. Um, there there, there is definitely some pros to this as well. And then once we have sort of that list that we review that, then, you know, we can just put this item to bed and just move forward with that. Does that sound good?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, um, so I'll I'll make sure to make a note of that and I'm ask the city attorney to to do that for us. Um, so moving forward, um, Councilor Vasquez, I was thinking on the on the this line, but I noticed in your notes. That you had something regards to this and it's, um. Where is it? Uh, so it's moving to a part C, the election in term?
Uh, so I have something in in eligibility.
All right, we'll have eligibility, yep.
I have my screen again, so you can see it. So here in my screen, right now, the chatter reads any voter. So so I'm going to highlight it in red, so you're ready to see what I'm talking about. So right now, the whether the chatter reads is that any voter shall be eligible to hold the office of the city council at large. And and I wish, you know, to present an idea that says that any person who has been a registered voter. So and resident of the city for a continuous period of at least one year prior to the date of the election or appointment of a vacant councillor seat. Shall be eligible to hold the office of city council or at large. So instead of just, you know, someone who moves in in Lawrence, uh, today. And, you know, there's an election a a month from now, I think will essentially go in and run for office. I think that we should, that that person should be a a voter and a resident for a minimum period of one year to be a councillor.
And what would your advice be to your suggestion be that that be the same for the district counselors?
So for the district counselor, I have something similar, but a little different. It I have, um, the the recommendation is for a continuous six-month period of the date of election appointment to a vacant. Uh, district councillor seat. I mean, I don't, I don't, if if the councillor thinks that it should be the same, you know, one year or six months for both. I I it's not something that will. I I think that we should have a a period of time, regardless of the amount. For when a registered, when a person is able to run for office, because we. You know, you have to be a registered voter for at least one year to run for state senator or state's representative. I think that something similar should be in the city council. We shouldn't just allow, or I wouldn't say not allow, but I think that we. I think that someone that has lived in Lawrence will understand Lawrence problems and will be able to better represent the neighborhoods. So I think that it, you know, I don't think the time is what I am more concerned, that that the amount of time, but rather that a time is established.
Okay, I I I, um, so so my view on it, I mean, I I I agree with you wholeheartedly. Um, I didn't realize that there there wasn't a a time period. Um, but what I would say is that whatever it is for at large, it should be for for district and and vice versa. Uh, I don't know if there are, if any other counselors have any thoughts on this?
Yes, to you, Mr. Chair.
Also Rodriguez?
Uh, essentially, I like the idea. I just want to follow over to to the the city solicitor to see if this this violate any 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 anybody's symbols right. Uh, by not allowing them to run for office. So if it's not, and then we can move forward. That's my point.
So that does the com- does the committee have a preference as far as a year or six months or not at all?
I would say six month.
Six months?
Six, six.
Okay, Council plant?
Yeah, so you're you're looking at someone who broke this, who, uh, who actually was was affected by this ordinance back in nineteen ninety-seven. I moved back to Lawrence in February and was elected in November. So in this particular scenario, someone like myself, who had roots in the city, who wanted to help my city out and wanted to get involved in my city and return back to my city. Would would be denied the opportunity to run in my own city that I came back in. So, uh, from my perspective, uh. I I just, it it's it's hard for me to support that only because that would not allow me to be, uh, to support my own community when I came back home.
So to you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, I would say to that that we can definitely add a a paragraph or a word that say that it doesn't have to to be necessarily consecutive. Right after, right, I mean, it could be a, you know, if you grow up here and you come back, you can, you'll be able to serve.
Yeah, no, that 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 sounds, I feel like when you start going in that direction, then, you know, potentially. Like other issues might come up. I think it's either or. Um, but but what I would say is that at the moment, uh, I I think that with Council of Plant. Um, his was the potentially the exception, you know, something like that, maybe not. Uh, but it doesn't hurt to send us to the city, uh, to to the city attorney. Um, just to get that information back. If she ends up saying, uh, no, we can't do this, the state can do this for X Y Z reason, uh, but we can't. Uh, then that sort of ends, uh, that conversation. But I did hear that it seems like, they they were, I'm sorry?
I think this is basically what it is, the state's extent for the municipality's agenda.
So so that could be it, we we don't know, right? So there's no point in having a debate when it it ends up being that we we can't do this. So it sounds like there's an interest in going in that direction. Um, but you're looking to see if one, if, um. If it is, uh, legal for, uh, for a city to put a time. A residence restriction of six months for, uh, to be elected to the city attorney, to to the city council at large or or district. Does that sound right? Okay, um, so I will, uh, I'm not putting these forth as like motions, because I think like, we don't necessarily have to. I'm just gonna, um, send an email to the city attorney. I'm going to CC the the council president. So just in case, you know, council president can help me, um, you know, sort of move things along. That way, uh, the city attorney at our next meeting will be present and can, um, and can speak to that. Um, uh, uh, council president, is the go-to meeting, it is being recorded because it's at the, it's being shared through Facebook?
So our meeting is currently being recorded.
Okay, perfect. Um, so let's move on to the next item, which is, uh, part C, election and term.
On that, I have, I have, I have a suggestion.
All right, well, we'll start with you, Council Rodriguez.
I think that we should move forward on this, saying that the first Saturday of the year. Instead of just saying. Uh, instead of just saying whatever you said there, it's crazy, because I mean, always is always Tuesday and is is close to. Um. It's close to the New Year's Eve and and, you know, nobody can visit you, nobody can come. And this and that, it's kind of like, you know, it's it's a difficult situation if we do it by by the charter. Essentially, uh, it is it is difficult for people to attend to those. To those events when we, uh, when we take the oath and or anybody, uh, in general. So I will say the first Saturday of the year.
So I think when when you're, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, uh, what you're talking about is that. Uh, within that, uh, section C, election in terms, it says the term of office of all members of the city council shall be for two years. Beginning, and this is where, uh, you have some comments on.
That's basically what I'm starting on right off.
Yeah, I just want to read it, just in case, uh, some counselors don't have it in front of them. Uh, beginning at seven o'clock in the evening on the first secular day in January of each even numbered year. Following their election and shall continue until their successors have been chosen and qualified. So what you're saying that instead of saying beginning at seven o'clock in the evening on the first secular day in January. Uh, of each even number year, that instead would be beginning at seven o'clock in the evening on the first Saturday in January.
Beginning on the first Saturday of the of the year, not seven o'clock, because sometimes we we take the whole of five.
Oh, you're saying at midnight?
No, I say the first Saturday to make it easy.
Right, but that, so so when we, when we take the oath, right? Um, even though that's like the a a formal, uh. You know, process that's open to the public, um, you know, technically. Like if something were to happen, if that meeting were to take place at at eight o'clock. We're still sort of empowered if the the clerk signs us in, you know. So I I I think that the the, there must be a reason why at seven o'clock. I'm sorry?
Should be, yes, I say two o'clock.
Twelve o'clock?
Two o'clock in the afternoon.
Two o'clock, okay, so that's that's what, um, um, what, uh, Council Rodriguez is proposing. Uh, does any other councils have a comment on that, Council of Plant?
So it, what we need to do is work in tandem to what the the charter provision has for the mayor. If you're going to have the mayor, the old mayor, if you will, work five or ten, five or four more days longer than the new council or vice versa. There needs to be some, some, um, work together. Now, the mayor's provision says that it's the same day, first secular, first secular day after the whatever it was, the first secular day after the. In January, following, uh, the election, so so it would be January the second. So hypothetically, the mayor could be sworn in on the second and the old council will be in existence for another three, four, five days. So we just need to keep that in mind.
One second, so so I think, you know, uh, so when I look at this, it's either one, uh, if this committee feels like this is a a a good change. Uh, to occur, and if that's the case, we can easily, you know, ensure, uh, because I would agree. If if we change it on one end, we have to change it, uh, on the other as well. Um, and some of the concerns that, uh, Council Rodriguez mentioned, um, you know, like, I personally don't see a problem with it. But like, I can see some of those issues and I think they fall, whether you're a a council member or you're a mayor. Uh, you you could have some of those those problems. Uh, so the question that we have in front of us is sort of, uh, is this, like, what are our thoughts on doing the particular change?
What do you think, Council President?
So I I think that it should, both of them should match. Uh, that way, there's no, you know, division in 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 the legislative soaring in at the the executive serving.
So one of the things that I'll add to this, um, just because, Council President, are you, are you a member of this committee?
I am not, I am a guest, I'm standing at the podium right now.
I I will, I will ask, even though it's really easy, because, you know, uh, good-looking man, we see his 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 name right here. We might want to be like, hey, join right in, right? Um, that we we don't get him in trouble, uh, and we ask questions when, uh, he's presenting, uh, on an item.
Is that a ten because of the coronavirus?
Speak, speaking, yeah, well, that was because he was presenting on the item. You know, uh, Council Reyes and I understand, uh, so I'm sure that neither of us will be engaging on that. Um, so, uh, so Council Reyes, do you have any thoughts on, uh, this particular matter?
Um, actually, I just feel the same, like, it, uh, the both item needs too much, you know, and it stayed the same, how do we had in the past? But in the same talking, I don't have any opposition on 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 that. I think it, you know, uh, having it the first Saturday, um, beginning of the year, I wouldn't oppose it. So I, it can be either way for me, but I.
Yeah, same. Same, are there, are there any sort of like big objections to this? Council plant?
I'm not sure if you got an objection, I'm just not sure what the problem is we're trying to solve. Is it close to New Year's Eve? Is that the deal? We're just, we don't, we just, is the next day and we don't win? I just don't understand what this, what's going, what's going, what it's going to solve.
Essentially, you, if, uh, I can answer the life, you allow me to, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, essentially, if we looking forward to get, uh, students involved, to get. Uh, to get, you know, young generations involved and to get everybody, the entire community. The entire committee involved, I think that we should be flexible, uh, to make those changes. January is the second is is definitely a a a day that is not quite, uh, the most. Uh, perhaps the most available for a lot of people, uh, to make those, to 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 make those events. And 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 the fact is that, um, we actually conduct business on the first and the third. Uh, Tuesdays of, uh, of, uh, of every, of every month. So if we keep a consistent with that, uh, the first Saturday make more sense than than having. Uh, whatever sits in the shadow right now, which is completely confusing that I don't even know what is what. And, uh, instead of just saying on a specific day. Uh, I would say it is, it is more. I would say it's more like, perhaps, uh, community friendly. Uh, having on a specific day. And obviously, that have to be consistent with the, with the day that the mayor take over as well.
Okay, so I mean, it sounds like there's some interest, um, so, um. I guess, uh, Council Rodriguez, if you, uh, let's just put, let's just put this into sort of, uh. Into Word, right? So that it's, so it's a formal suggestion and that way we can just run it on the next meeting?
Whatever, that's fine. Junin?
Uh, what what are you interested in doing?
I would like to have that as drafted and presented to the committee as well, to see if they like it.
Right, so. So so I guess what I'm seeing is, is that it's just from, uh, the conversation we're having between us four. It seems like, it sounds like, um. Uh, nobody here is completely against the idea, right? So if you can present to the committee, um, what you just stated, just. Just, you know, written down, because we would have to change that and we would also have to change, um, the section four. You know, whatever paragraph on section four as well.
Actually, the main sections is based on our section, because our section take take over, that mean it it's mentioned at first. So we just need to refer to that section as well, once we get to that point and make it consistent what we have in front of us. If that, if that move forward.
I agree. So let's just, just put it in writing.
Just doing a section by section. Once we get to that point, we know that we really work on it and and present the ball together and then keep it moving.
Okay, so so we'll do that. So, uh, so at our next meeting, you're going to present the.
Take the minutes?
Uh, so we have, uh, one of the individuals in here is, uh, our minute taker, Felix. Uh, but this is also being, this is also being recorded. Uh, I am trying to, I'm taking notes as far as action items that I, uh, that I need to do. Um, and I'm going to share this with the with the minute taker.
Well, essentially, that this is basically changing, instead of saying, uh, right after seven o'clock, instead of saying whatever is said there. In section three, the first Saturday of the year.
First Saturday of the year. Okay, um. Council President, uh, had a suggestion on his notes, um, but since he's not currently in front of us, uh, there. Um, it was very similar to mine, so. Uh, so as part of the election in terms, it says that, uh, the term of office for all members of the city council shall be, uh, for two years. Um, and I think that, uh, Council President is coming back on. So, yes, it says right now that it's for two years. I noticed that he put that for at large, he was thinking of.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
Um, okay, so if we, if we look, we have the. The election in terms, that's where we are, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so section C, uh, uh, right now, he reads the term of office of all members of the city council shall be two years. Beginning at seven o'clock, and we had discussed that earlier. Uh, but now, my recommendation to the committee is that the term of office for counselors at large shall be four years and district counselors two years. Um, the reason for this is because I believe that oftentimes, as counselors, we, especially, uh, counselors at large, they. For the most part, they seem to bring me a a broader perspective of, uh. You know, they they serve the the general public at a larger level. Uh, so they may have projects that they're working on, that two years is just not sufficient. It's not sufficient for district counselors with all honesty. Uh, but I feel that even for counselors at large. It it shortens, because if, at least we have the opportunity to interact more. Uh, at a more personal level with constituents at the district level. But counselors at large, I feel that might not have the same accessibility. They are serving the community as a whole. Um, so I believe that counselors at large should be served the opportunities to serve for four years versus two years.
You know, I I counsel, uh, President, so the reason I I mentioned that, because one of the things that I was, uh, I put that on my notes. I think, um, you know, outside of that, outside of just, you know, the the. the, the different types of projects that a councilman at large might have, it is very difficult to go to visit all your constituents within two years. I think when you are a district council, you can easily do that in the first six months, nine months. You can go through and ensure that your presence is felt. But you know, when you're at, at large, it's, you know, you tend to focus in certain areas to the point where, you know, you're kind of like, you know, jump in somewhere, jump in, you know, somewhere else. And one of the thoughts that I had was, you know, I wonder if it's possible to give, you know, especially even campaigning as a at-large candidate, I think it's, it's different than a district council. Like there, there is no way for me to be able to reach the number of constituents that my, my fellow district councillor are able to. FYI, Councilor Vasquez, are you still sharing your screen? No, I just didn't want, you know, many personal information to be out there.
Why you say something?
I'm sorry, Council Rodriguez?
I think, why you say anything?
Oh, well, I'm trying to watch out. I definitely think that that's a good idea. And I think that the, you know, potentially, I'm pretty sure that there are other communities that do something similar, you know. The question I would have is, does anyone think that there is a potential con to doing this?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Council Reyes.
If that is going to be the case, then I'm going to be running a large. Right?
Only one, only one election for you?
Yes, of course. So, and I, and I saw Mr. Councilor La Plante smile, so I believe that he's seconded and he's also going to be running a large.
Let's, hey, hey, if you all run at large, let me know.
If that ever pass, no more council of district. I'm going to be a large.
Well, that's why. Through you, Mr. Chair, earlier I presented adding two extra councillors. So there you go. There's an opportunity.
I'm going to go to large. So I'm, I'm just making I, my public announcement now. I'm going to be a large.
Okay. But out, outside of, you know, what personally we would want to do, right? You know, when I look at this, I think about like the next 10 to 20 years, right? And how do we ensure that we have representatives that will be good for the city? You know, potentially there's tons of people that I think might be better than me at my job, right? How do I ensure that those type of people run for office? One of the things that I, I find is that it is easier getting someone to run for office at a district level because that's more obtainable, right? Ensuring that you have, you know, so for example, if I'm running in District Z against another individual, it is very easy for at least even if Z has been an incumbent for the last two terms, I can at least say that I can knock on every door and every voter has an opportunity to put my face with the incumbent and make that decision. When you're running at large, it's not about that. A lot of it is name recognition. A lot of the times, you know, it's very hard for a, you know, an individual to sort of go out there and get to, get to know everybody, right? So, you know, potentially I'm.
Please.
I'm sorry?
When I can.
Okay. Yeah. So I, I think potentially that there might be an opportunity there that if there are people that are running that are, you know, highly qualified and they're interested in representing not just district issues, but really focusing on the at-large issues that knowing that they only have to run for, you know, every four years, it might push them to actually run for office. So those are my, my thoughts with that. Council Rodriguez, you go first and then Council of La Plante?
I think that you guys are taking it a, they're completely run approach. This is not about elections. This is not how easy it is, how difficult it is and how can I go to my constituents. No. This is about the work that needs to be done. Councilor at large should take a specific project like other community does and do it. Sometime, not you, Council, Mr. Pajano, but sometime that is, city councillors don't do nothing. I'm sorry. I'd be honest. Because city councillor per district do all the hard work and they, son of, son of the city councillor at large, they say, no, talk to your district councillor. That's the reality of the, of the game. Forget about, forget about elect, how elections are run or how difficult it is to get elected. It's about getting the things done for the people once we get elected. And forget about election. This is not about election. This is about how you're going to, we're going to be serving better our community. And, and, and I have experience and with city councillor at large that they, they have a specific project that they need to get done. Throughout that specific period of time that they get elected because they're not focusing necessarily, they're not focusing necessarily on the, on the issues that the district councillors are focusing. And they are basically, and, and those phone calls and stuff like that. And, and, and sometime, you know, it's an easy, an easy position, kind of, for a lot of city councillors at large. And, and to be honest with you, councillor per district, do the work. And councillor at large, they sometimes do the work. This is not your case, Pajano, because I know you work hard for your constituents. But that we have some cases that forget about it. It's like, you know, I have received phone calls from my constituents that this person give me a number. What? Really? This is, this is wrong. So at the end of the day, this is not about how you can get elected or how difficult it is to get elected at large. This is about what you can do for the community and what you can do for the people that you, that you, that you represent. A lot of, a lot of candidates, they choose to go at large because they, they have a world, world name recognition throughout the entire city and not necessarily per district. It is easier. So essentially that's basically what, what it is. And, and I truly believe that, you know, if it is in two years, four years, whatever, but I mean, we got to make sure that if it is four years, we have a specific thing that the city council is responsible for.
So Council, before we move on to Council, Council President, I got to say, you know, I, I would want more diversity here. Because I think this committee is pretty biased, anti-councillor-at-large. We work just.
Come from a district councillor.
No, no, I'm saying we work as hard as everybody else. You know, I got to support my other council at-large colleagues because I think that they would, you know, I don't know how it was in the past, but I think that everyone, all the, both in the last term and in this term, the individuals that are councillor at large, I think that they do a lot of work. But it's different work than, than district councillors. I tend to have, for whatever reason, I get a lot of constituent service calls, but I know that it's not to the same level as, you know, councillor Reyes, La Plante, or a councillor Rodriguez. So I completely understand that. What I would say is that we can't necessarily think about as we're, you know, and I, and I see where the committee is, is heading in this, that's fine. But we can't necessarily think about the bad, right? Like the bad characters that have missed use. The responsibility that the city has given them, because those bad characters can be, or lazy characters, whatever it might be, they're replaced, you know, on the next election.
Four years? To replace them?
Well, hopefully the public is smart enough not to put someone there that they don't, you know, hasn't already met certain qualifications to show that they are hardworking individuals. But, so I'll leave it there. Councilor La Plante, you had something to say?
No, I, I think there is a fundamental difference between two years and a four-year term. I think the way that our founding, the, the councillors back in eighty-three decided to do this is that they wanted to keep some accountability. Going two years out means we're, we're feet are to the fire all the time. Once you go four years, you can make the argument like, okay, you not really have to be beholden to your constituents. You got a little more freedom. You can use your judgment. You don't have to do this to see where the pulse is. You, there's a lot more ability just to kind of do what you think is the right thing to do and have less input, if you will, from individuals. When you're doing it every two years, you really have to factor what the voters and residents have to, to say. Because it, it, that's just the way it's built. That's just the way the two-year terms are, whether it's Congress for two years or US Senate for six years. That's the kind of, you know, that's, that's what we're looking at. So I, part of me kind of, I'm intrigued by the four-years thing. I, I think there's, I'm intrigued by it. I need to get that some more thought, but I understand why in eighty-three they decided to go two years on this because, for the reason I just mentioned. And it potentially is paralleling with Mr. Rodriguez's thing, you know, with regards now, not to the workload, but rather to, to the accountability factor. And so, yeah, I'll leave it there.
Council Reyes, thank you, Council of La Plante.
No.
Oh, I thought you had something to say. I'm sorry. Well, seeing as I, I feel like there's not a lot of, so it's not of interest to sort of move forward on that. So, so unless we have sort of more information on it, well, let me, hold on, Council President, is, is there anything else you'd like to say on that item?
So that, that's pretty much, you know, I, I think that it will. I think that councillors at large do a certain type of work that encompasses a whole population, you know, the district, you get to focus on, on our districts. So I, I feel that with all honesty, I think two years they go by extremely quick. For the argument made by Councilor Rodriguez and Councilor La Plante, I agree with them. I think that he allows us to have some sort of accountability. You know, and, and the voters can come two years later and say, hey, you didn't do the work that we believe you will do. We no longer believe that, that you deserve to represent us because I think it's an honor for all of us. It's an honor to represent the people. So i- if the people don't feel that we should have that honor, they could move us in two years. But I also feel that two years is a short amount of time to be able to accomplish a lot. As you know, to put up a stop sign, minimally it takes us anywhere between three to six months. And that is simply because of the bureaucracy behind it. So a stop sign, it's something that it's relatively simple. Yet it takes us almost half a year to accomplish. So I, I, I just feel that two years is not sufficient for, you know, for individuals to be effective. You know, even, even discussing matters, you know, they have to be placed on the agenda. They have to. It, it, it just keeps piling up the amount of time. So even if you're intentional in getting the work done, the bureaucracy doesn't allow you to get the work done. So that's, that's why I believe that it's important at extra time.
And Council of, I, I'd agree because I mean, I think I'm the example of it. I mean, many of you, especially those who chair the ordinance committee know that beginning of my first term, I put in a lot of time and effort on different citywide policies. Unfortunately, unlike dealing, you know, constituent matter, you can solve that a day, a couple of weeks, done. Even a stop sign before your term, you can make sure that that stop sign is complete. But a lot of the policies that I, you know, I put in place, yes, some of them, you know, took a year and a half to, you know, to get done. But most of them are, are tabled somewhere. It's, it's at some point or another because there's other policy work and there's, you know, larger bureaucracy when you're doing, and you're trying to create policy at a, you know, sort of like at that citywide sort of level. So that's the case. Like if we want at-large councillors to really focus on those type of issues, which I think are very, very valuable, you need two things. One, you know, I think I, I am grateful for, for the team that, you know, we work with because I feel like, you know, throughout everyone, the, the district councillors are putting in a lot of work. If they weren't putting in a lot of work, then I'd be getting not like three to five calls a day, I'd be getting 20 calls a day, right? Because it'd be like, oh, Pavel's effective. Let me call him. But right now they don't have to because they have Estela Reyes, you know, in their. Then they'd call me, right? Like if Estela wasn't there and Estela, whoever was representing that district was someone that did no work, they tried calling that person and then they'd be like, wait, I voted for somebody else at large, Pavel Pajano, let me try this, let me see if this guy can help me. But, you know, if we don't want city councillor, so I think it's great having district councillors putting in the work. That way councillors at large are not necessarily completely tied into doing a lot of the constituent services and that they're spending their time doing this policy work in order to ensure for that to be completed, you need more time. But so let's just say this, so it, it sounds like, while it's iffy, perhaps councillor Vasquez, you know, before we sort of like vote on it, whether or not we want to keep having this discussion or not, maybe giving time for people to just, you know, think through some thoughts on it. And perhaps you can send us like two or three blurbs, kind of saying like what the, what the positives of doing this would be. I think we understand the cons, which is, you know, con is the accountability factor, which I think is completely huge and understandable. And on our next meeting, we can sort of judge to see whether one is a little bit more important than, than, than the other. Because I don't think it completely takes away accountability because if a person is doing no work, then when their term is done, they don't get elected. I think it's harder for a city council at large to, so for example, those are in their district are loved by their folks. You know, like Council Rodriguez, you can literally take three, four months off and people would be like, he is great. Because you guys already walked through, you've walked through it so many times that they just know your face. You know, you pop into a building and, you know, like even if my picture's there, they'll be like, are you Reyes? I'm like, no, that's, you know, she's a woman, you know, they're like, oh, I always. You know, saying, no, no, it's not just elections, hold on, elections. These are the people who they think represent them, right? So, so that being said, and that large councillor, if they don't do the work, they're out, you know, I mean, those are my thoughts. Well, let's just leave it there. So we're gonna, Council President is going to submit to us in the next couple of weeks, a couple of blurbs of pros for that and our next meeting, you know, we'll, we'll close on it. All right. The other item that I wanted to hear comments on, same thing, elections and terms. It was about putting term limits.
No.
I'm sorry?
No, it's okay.
Yeah. So, so putting term limits on, on this, you know, I'm a believer and I, you know, I, I, I talked to, to folks. I mean, I'm, I'm on my second term, right? Mayor has two terms, has eight years. You know, I'm sort of a believer that eight years as well, you know, is good. I mean, there's pros and cons, right? The con is that you might lose someone that has, you know, after eight years, you have tons and tons of experience when it, when it comes to that. The pro is, is that you have the ability to get new people to come in and put forth new ideas into, into the council. So I just wanted to make sure, I mean, this is an issue that's talked about usually like when it comes close to, to election times, whether it's for council or for rap or for whatever. So I just wanted to put it forward here just to hear what your thoughts were on it. No thoughts?
No, no, no. I think that is something that we have to think about it. And then we can bring some more info for our next.
All right. So I'll do that. So at our next meeting, I'll talk to the city attorney and see if she can give us perhaps a, a list of different cities that have term limits and see if we can draft a, hold on, let me just write this down, term limits, pros and cons. Again, I think. I'm sorry?
For the city council.
For, for the, yeah, for all, for all, yeah.
Because I mean, it's different function. I mean, the, the secretary, the secretary office, I understand the, 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 the term limits. But on the city council, it is, is something different. You, 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 with, over the years, you get that institutional trends that, that is valid. institutional trends that, that is valuable. So.
Yeah, and I, I think the mayor would probably say the same. Right? Maybe not, maybe not this, maybe after, you know, I feel like after dealing with so many crises, uh, the mayor is probably wanting a break uh, from everything, but, uh, I am sure that anyone in elected office, um, can see the benefits of, um, serving, you know, as much time as possible. Like, you know, people in Congress and Senate, some people say there should be term limits for those individuals. Some others say, no, they say kind of, you know, similar to what you're saying. Um, I think that there's, there's value in, in doing that, uh, to ensure that ideas, uh, new ideas are being put forward and, uh, new people are being brought in. I'll be honest, I'm, I'm in the, I'm the council. You know, I, I can see myself maybe going for a third term, um, longer than that, I don't think so. Um, but you know, part of it is that if I can't get anything accomplished within what I want to accomplish within four or six years, um, I don't know, potentially maybe, uh, you know, another term could that get it done? I don't know. Um, but I want to make sure that I am not stopping other capable individuals from holding this office as well. So that's my thought. So what I'll provide, so it seems like folks want to think about that a lot. Um, so I'll try to provide for our next meeting some, uh, some pros and cons and, um, list of other cities that are, that do it. And then we can see, uh, again, that's something that I'm very interested in. Um, but yeah, Counselor Plant, I'm sorry, did you want to? You waved, so I wasn't sure if it was that mean.
No, I just think it's important when we have guests in the council meeting, that we recognize them, that's all.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I mean, that we, we see our, uh, our viewers, our audience members, you know, walking by, Counselor Rodriguez.
We finally got some, uh, a, a variety of audience in, in the meeting.
I love it, I love it. Um, all right, so, uh, so moving on. Uh, okay, so three point two organization officers. Any changes or suggestions on that end?
There's just one, one simple suggestion, but the, the suggestion is to go, uh, in hand with what I have proposed earlier. Uh, through you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so when we look at organization of officers, uh, if you read down the city, um, the city council shall then elect from its membership by separate vocal votes, a president and vice president. If each five votes shall be necessary for election, my suggestion is that if we then have eleven members, if that were to move forward, uh, then instead of five, it should be moved to seven. But this change only should happen if the eleven members of the council is approved.
Oh, what we can say to you, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chair, we can say is that the city council should have core. And that will, we can cover the, that doesn't matter how many members we have because
So, so I'm sorry.
That means that we, if we have nine, we need five, and we, in, if we have eleven, and then we need six.
Right, so, so, so what I would say is if we vote on one, then yeah, we would have to, um, you know, the city attorney would probably tell us, not probably, should tell us, like, okay, if you do this, you also have to change this part as well. Um, yeah, so I, I would completely agree with that. And I, I took that note down and I'll make sure I, I present that to, um, to the city attorney. Um, so move, uh, is there any other comments, uh, as far as, uh, three point two? Okay, um, moving to three point three, uh, come, I'm sorry, Counselor Plant, did you wave?
No, I didn't.
Uh, all right, haha, going to three point three compensation.
Hi, through you, Mr. Chair, I do have a recommendation.
Yep.
So currently, um, it reads, currently, he reads, um, the city council shall by ordinance establish an annual salary for its members. Um, my recommendation will be that the city council shall by ordinance as recommended by the, uh, salary review commission. So this is something new, adding a salary review commission. So instead of the council reviewing the, the, you know, the salary ourselves, I feel that we should have members of the community determine what we should get paid. And, uh, uh, essentially, we will be asking them to say, you know, and review on a, on a periodic basis. So the review commission will then have to be created if, if this amendment goes through. Or the review commission will have to be created and then amend that section. So essentially saying, members of the community will determine how much the council gets paid. Um, right now, we determine what we get paid. Um, and even though we have not done it, we could change that ordinance and it will be effective for the, the upcoming council. Uh, you know, we could increase our salary and if the mayor, uh, you know, puts in the money, then essentially we could earn double, triple, quadruple, and we determine that. Um, and of course, uh, I, I believe that we are deserving of the, the, the stipend that we have received because we work for it. You know, oftentimes people think that we shouldn't get paid, but I do believe that, that council should get paid. Um, but at the same time, I feel that residents should be given an opportunity to have input as to how much we get paid. Uh, and that, I feel that that will do that.
Uh, so Council President, I think one of the important parts, um, in this piece, uh, and you might not have this right now, is, uh, the who, who composes this, uh, this committee?
So I have not gone as far as to the composition of the committee itself, but I definitely would want it to be composed of members of the community. Um, I, I think that it would, you know, it will be ideal if we have members of the community representing it. Uh, and by members of the community, I mean the community at large, uh, in, in essence, you know, we could have, this is not specifically what I am recommending because I haven't looked at all the details, but maybe we will have, you know, someone from the churches and, you know, a parent, a business owner, a homeowner, you know, like a, a representation of who we are because we're getting paid with the people's money, uh, you know, it's with, with their tax money. So I, 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 you know, they don't usually have a say as to how the money is spent. And I think that this will give residents an opportunity to say at least minimally, how much of their money goes where and how.
So, so I would say, so one of the reasons that I'm interested in, in sort of at least, uh, following this train of thought, um, it's, it's very different because I think, um, I, I believe that right now residents have a say in the sense that they can speak through their, their city council members. Um, and, you know, advocate, uh, which way, you know, something should occur. Uh, the reason why I think that, uh, potentially, depending on how this committee is, uh, who composes this committee, who appoints to this committee, um, reason that I think that this might be valuable is that I think there, there are times when us voting for a salary raise might be politically difficult for counselors to make. Um, like I'm of the opinion, like I'm not even thinking for myself, like I'm thinking, how, how could we ensure that we have more capable individuals running for office when we're currently living in, uh, a certain time period where people don't like politics and they think that politics is, uh, is bad, you know? So if I'm a professional and I'm working fifty hours, uh, uh, a week, why should I run, you know, for city council when I can volunteer? I could be a board member or another, and I'm prof, there's other ways that I can volunteer my services and not necessarily be on the limelight of the press. Like all of us know that once you become an elected official, uh, like, you know, you're, you're being watched by everyone. The press is watching your every move. Um, you know, you're, you're putting a spotlight on yourself. Um, and it's difficult for, you know, individuals that are young professionals or, uh, have families to undertake something like this, uh, when the, uh, potentially the salary is low. And it's difficult for us council members that understand this to raise salaries when we got to think like, oh, um, our constituents are not going to like this, or they're going to think that we're being self-serving. Potentially, if there's a commu- uh, committee, maybe director of personnel is there, you know, basically like individuals that are, um, you know, have some professional background and can look at what the market and what other counselors are making and that type of stuff, maybe they can make a recommendation to the city council for, you know, that it's totally not in their power, but like they're at least recommending to the city council, uh, whether salaries should be raised or lowered or what, whatever it might be. And now there's some, um, at least it's coming from this group that is identifying the issue and providing evidence and research as to why that change should happen, not coming from Counselor Piano where everyone will be like, oh, he's just trying to pay himself more. You know, that's why I, you know, like you, you're saying this idea and I, I have an interest in it. Uh, but the composition part, I think is important. Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes, what I was thinking is like, we are, you, instead of just focusing on that, uh, on that committee and the composition of that committee, we can do that by ordinance, the committee itself. Uh, how we're gonna, how that committee is gonna be, it's gonna be how many members and stuff like that. So if we just say a committee gonna determine it, fine, and it's gonna be determined by ordinance, we move forward and then we can continue the conversation.
So I guess, is your point that we can create this safety committee through ordinance and not necessarily put it in the charter?
If we mention it on the channel that a committee is gonna make the determination and then is that, and we can create an ordinance to determine that the committee. Am I right, correct? Uh, City, uh, Counsel President?
So the way that it, the, the way that it is right now is that if we wanted to make an adjustment to our salary, whether to increase or decrease, we have to change the ordinance. So the ordinance as written now, we have our, our salary at fifteen thousand dollars for the district counselors and seventy thousand dollar for the council president. The commission, it, so my, my suggestion is that instead of us doing that, we create this commission, uh, the salary review commission that essentially will, the composition detail, I have not gotten to it. Uh, but the concept is that a group of individuals will essentially determine what the council gets paid versus the council determine it, what we get paid. Um.
Uh, Counsel President, I'm sorry to interrupt. So it, it's just important that instead of saying, uh, a group of individual determine, a group of individual, the difference between determine and recommend. So.
So, so I think that it will be recommend, um, and, and let, let, yeah, let me, so the correct, yeah. The by ordinance recommended by the salary review commission. So the salary review commission will essentially come back and say, you should earn X amount of dollars. We will at the end vote on whether or not we want to accept that, uh, salary. Uh, because it's, it's simply a recommendation. Now, they, they are not saying, oh, you're earning an extra X, or you're earning an extra less. They recommend it and then we vote. Right now, we decide, we recommend, we, it's all on our hands. Uh, and I think that it should be a group of individuals give us the recommendation so they, they actually do the analysis on what will be fair, uh, you know, the, however they, they wish to do, like, I don't, let's say for instance, you know, there's usually a lot of discussion in the community, councilors, for instance, should get paid for committees that they participate in versus just like an overall amount. No, that's, I, I don't have an opinion either or on this matter. It's just things that usually come to me. If the commission comes and says that's how it should be, then the council will essentially vote, okay, this is what it's gonna look like. But the recommendation is there and we'll discuss, you know, we'll vote on the recommendation. So it's not our.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, but so we are not deciding, you know, amounts, we're not deciding that. They re- they recommend and after the recommendation, we vote on the recommendation. So similar to, you know, the, the budget that it, so, so the idea goes back to the budget. You know, the mayor comes in with a recommendation for the appropriation of the budget every year. And then we get to vote on that, on that budget, on that document.
I'm sorry. So he, he's, he's, he's an idea. Uh, like, I, as you're saying this, uh, I'm thinking, what's to stop you right now from creating a committee that, um, composed of the individuals that you think are the right folks, right? Um, and have them give a recommendation to the council as far as, I mean, not just city council, but, uh, school committees, you know, like, you know, how much they should get paid. You know, potentially, yeah.
So right now, I could, I could do that because I am passionate about this subject. I think that we should allow, uh, for this not to be done by the council. However, a future council president could come in and essentially to disband that committee. So if it's written in the charter, it will remain, uh, you know, permanently versus just a committee created by a, a council president because we only have four committees that are speci- uh, specific to the, to the city charter. So, and then we'll, we'll discuss that further down when we get to it. Uh, I could do it as council president now, I have the authority, but it will be a temporary, uh, solution or temporary fix on something that could, I think, you know, have long lasting effect.
Okay.
Um, so, so essentially, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not visualizing my council presidency but versus what the, the council should look when I am not there. Um.
Uh, so, so I, I, I think, um, well, no, hold on, uh, Counselor Plant, Counselor Reyes, you guys have any, any thoughts?
Um, actually, you know, I've been missing a couple of meetings. I don't have no information in front of me, uh, my fault. And all these changes are new for me, so I do need more time just to kind of digest all the changes. So, um, just has to counsel the plan.
Yeah, and just, uh, so Counselor Reyes, um, so all these changes, they're new for everybody. Um, so today, um, so essentially, so the way that we're gonna be structuring these meetings is that, uh, every new meeting, we're gonna focus on a certain section or two sections of the charter. Um, and we're gonna have a meeting once a month unless we need to meet, uh, more frequently. Like, for example, you know, we're already at like the hour mark, um, so it could be that at our next meeting, since we're doing review on chapter three, we might not have enough time to do section four. Um, so with that, every time we move on to a new section, there's gonna be new ideas, um, which, you know, so it makes sense for all of us to kind of, you know, kind of think through certain things. So don't feel like you're, you're alone in that. Uh, Counselor Plant?
Thank you.
I just a couple, I guess, a thought or two regarding pay. So, uh, if we're gonna go down this road of actually having this like a special commission, if you're a member of the public who's already jaded by the fact that you don't really think the counselors are in it to help the people out, but rather just in it for their own own self-gain, uh, the, the membership of that committee is gonna be incredibly important. Uh, it's, it's, and it's very difficult to find a non-biased, non-agenda-driven committee that's going to make a recommendation that's going to pass the sniff test. For example, if I, we were to call somebody who's on a border, another border commission, that pro- person's problems brought forth by the mayors are probably already been voted on by us. We are, may already have some sort of relationship with that person. Now we're asking them, so what do you think? Should we get a little pay increase or what? And, and that conversation can be a bit jaded by someone who's saying, look at those guys again, and guys and gals, they're just trying to, they're just, what are they doing for their pay? And they're gonna get another, better money? And this is especially sensitive in our city. When our city is, we all know the dynamics, we all understand the economics of our city and, and, and where we stand with respect to the other, um, municipalities and the Commonwealth with respect to income. And for us to get more money on top of what we already have is not gonna play well. So, obviously, very touchy subject. I mean, I was here on the, I was in the council, it was fifty-two hundred dollars a year, it's a hundred bucks a week. And we went from there to fifteen thousand, so it went up by ten thousand dollars in one whoosh. And I wasn't here when that vote took place to go from fifty-two to fifteen thousand. But, um, I, I just, I just think it, I don't care what bar do you are, the legislature today in Beacon Hill, they're getting the, their, their hand, their, their pants kicked all the time because they have this rider inside their, in, in their provision that said they get a certain number, if, if the, if the state economy goes up a certain amount, then they automatically get a pay increase. There, nobody, you know, it's, it's hard. Nobody wants to pay, nobody wants to pay employees. It's a, it's, it's very, it's, it's very, it's a, it's an incredibly dicey situation because they were saying, you're doing this for the money you're doing because you want to help your city out. Which is it? And why do you, and that would do it for free, they would say. Um, and these are just what we have to deal with. So, I'm, I'm not offering an opinion, but rather I'm just kind of providing some goalposts as we go through this discussion. And if we're gonna go down the road and the council president, it's, I mean, And if we're gonna go down the road and the council president, I mean, from, from the very beginning of this evening, I think every proposal has merit, and I would hope that each one of them would have the ability to get to the ordinance committee, um, at some level, to have a, a vote on it. Because I don't think any of these thoughts are absolutely crazy. Yeah, I may not be in support of them, but I think they, they're all legitimate and they're all, and they've got some basis for it, and they deserve some sort of, uh, from the ordinance committee perspective, some sort of, some sort of comment. And this is another one. I think that this is worthy of discussion at the ordinance committee level, um, because there is no, there is no good way to do this. There is, there, I don't even know how Blanchett did it, you know, twelve years ago and got the, the, when we fifty-two to fifteen thousand. I'm not sure how that took place. I wasn't around for that. But somehow that happened. So, I don't know.
Um, so, so, uh, just for everyone's sort of, uh, information consumption, I think in Lowell, it's around twenty-four thousand for, uh, for city councillors. But in some other cities, it's a lot lower than ours. So, um, just something for us to sort of understand. Uh, Councillor President, I'd love to work with you, um, on this issue. Um, you know, before the next meeting, seeing if we can, uh, sort of come up with, um, maybe, uh, like writing, like, like putting, putting the committee making a little bit more concrete and making the process a little bit more concrete. So that way the councillors in this committee have a better understanding on what the, uh, the pathway might be. And another thing for you to think about is that potentially as, as we're going, I mean, because we don't know, maybe we'll, we'll end this, uh, come July, maybe it's a little bit later. Um, but I think having a working pilot might not be such a bad thing, right? So, um, as we're thinking through this, if you put forward a special committee, uh, to research this, or, I don't know, you, like, you know, like, like something like that, then I think it makes it, you know, like seeing it being done, uh, makes it a lot easier for people to understand what it is that, uh, that we're thinking. So, some, something for you to think about, but I definitely, I, I like this idea, so I'd love to work with you to kind of like move that forward. Yeah, okay. Um, all right, so next is prohibitions. Any comments on that? So prohibitions, all it says is holding city office uh, or city employment, no member of the city council, so during the term for he, which he was elected, hold any other compensated or uncompensated city office or city employment. Pretty self-centered. Uh, councillor Plant?
Yes, I've got a suggestion on this, and, and this was done during the Lantigo administration. I brought this back from two thousand fourteen. And this will be both for the mayor and for the council. Uh, I, I, I offer this as a, for our consideration. So make a person ineligible for election or appointment to any local elective office or to hold a position of public employment in Lawrence that is policymaking or a discretionary authority over public assets if in the preceding twenty years, a person was involved, or was convicted, convicted of a felony involving dishonesty, deceit, fraud, or breach of the public trust. And the conviction was related to the person's official capacity while holding any elective office or position of employment in local, state, or federal government. So essentially, the, the nutshell here is if, if you have been convicted of committing a crime in the public trust, that, that would, that would, you would be prohibited from holding another position in public trust and ever, and after than twenty years. So if you were here for twenty-five years, I guess we would allow that you to go forward, pay your, pay your price.
Um, so, uh, what I would ask, uh, my first question is, has there been any instance, um, where something like that has occurred? Keep in mind, I can think of is like, I think, was it in Washington DC, um, there was a mayor that was elected there that had gone to jail. Um, I don't remember why, but he had gone to jail and the people elected him. And it was sort of like, you know, when you talk to folks from Washington, you know, because how would you elect somebody that went to jail, um, you know, into office? I think he was in jail when they elected him. Um, the whole thing is like, that's who the people wanted. Um, so I think in order for me to like, sort of understand a little bit better, I would need to see, like, is, was there, is there an example of something? Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
The Mayor of Providence, Rhode Island, Buddy Cianci, was a classic example of somebody who was convicted of crimes, embezzlement kind of crimes, other kind of public trust crimes while he was mayor of Providence, Rhode Island. Um, he would be a classic example. You may, I mean, the legendary one is Mayor James Michael Curley of Boston, of course, who actually won, wanted to see what he was in, was he, when he was in jail, which I think what made him what you're referencing. Of course, in Washington DC, there was Marion Barry back in the day. That was a drug issue back in, in the nation's capital, and there may have been someone since then as well. I don't remember. Uh, but, but the, the thing here is that there was a time in our city, and that's a recent future now. What happened ultimately was there was no, there was no conviction of crimes or anybody in our city. I don't wanna go back to nineteen twelve or nineteen fourteen, where there was actually a mayor back in our city that actually was convicted of a crime and then continued to serve. So there is a, a record in our city of, of, of a previous city official. But I guess the, the question here is, do we, we want to allow someone who's violated, who's been convicted, that's important, convicted, of violating the public trust. We want to allow that person to, to again, be able to, to take over. And even if it's a cult of personality, et cetera, you know, it's someone who just is charming as they come. Um, that person is already, you know, the question would be, have they forfeited their right because our public trust will allow them to come back in without having sufficient time at past? So I offer that as a consideration. I, you know, at this point, I don't know where, if, you know, this was done in the heat of battle back six years ago and times have changed, but it's still worthy of discussion because history can repeat itself.
So, um, i- if possible, if you can send me that language so I can send it to the city attorney, um, I'm interested in.
It's in your packet. It's, I just read it from the packet, so you have it right in front of you.
It's in my packet. All right, well, uh, it, it's not in front of me right now. So, perfect. So I'll, I'll look through it, um, and I'll ask the city attorney, just because I'm just interested in just as far as state of Massachusetts, can we do that? I don't know. So, but, uh, uh, I mean, it definitely sounds interesting. Uh, any other comments or questions? None, okay. Um, so, let's, so at, at the next, uh, meeting, uh, we'll, uh, discuss that and, uh, put that to a vote now moving forward, exercise of powers, procedures. Uh, go ahead, councillor President.
So it's in section, uh, B for the quorum, uh, again, only if we were to add, eleven, you know, two more councillors. Uh, instead of the presence of five, it will be, my recommendation will be six members. And the affirmative votes of six instead should be seven. Um, and when, so I will just read the full sentence. The affirmative votes of six to become seven members shall be required to adopt any appropriation order. Any other motion or measures may be adopted by a majority of not, not less than five, should be six affirmative votes, except as otherwise provided by law or the charter. So it goes in hand with what councillor Rodriguez had mentioned.
Makes sense. Uh, any other comments?
Thank you. But I think that, uh, it would be helpful to, for members of a city council that succeed us, when none of us are around, to have more clarity when it comes to subcommittees. There's always the question when, every now and then, when there's nobody with any kind of seniority, can we have a meeting? What's a quorum for a subcommittee? Can we have it if there's just two or three? And these questions, they arise constantly. If we could just have some clarity in our, in our, in our charter to, just to, what it currently is, and if it changes, of course, to eleven members, then we would make the appropriate change. But what consists of quorum when a subcommittee meets? And having, and having that as part of it.
Let me just write this down.
Uh, today, today's budget, today's committee is arena, if we have three people, we have a quorum for a committee, right? We have four. We purposely don't put five members of the city council on a committee because that would constitute a, is that, because that constitutes a quorum of the full city council. Um, and if we have four, then we, we never, we would never have that, we, we would never trigger a potential quorum if we were to pretend, you know, have some sort of discussions or something. So that, that doesn't trigger. I think that's the reason why we've been advised. I think the council president can continue with that under his advisement. But just having that in there, I think, just clarifies it.
Yep, so, um, so I put that down as a note. Um, so I'll take that up with the city attorney and that the next meeting, um, will, will bring, will bring language on that. Um, I think that, that makes sense. Um, councillor Reyes, any comments or questions? No? Councillor Reyes, no?
No.
Sure?
No, no, no.
Okay, all right. Um, uh, moving forward, I had something on, all right, so C rules and procedures all the way down to section five, uh, where it says, uh, I'll read, uh, for those of us that don't have the charter in front of us, it says, "A full, accurate, up-to-date record of the proceedings of the city council and of all committees and subcommittees thereof shall be kept, which shall be made available in a place convenient to the public, and a certified copy of all such records shall be kept, shall be kept available in the office of the city clerk." Uh, basically, what it's saying is that, uh, our records of our proceedings are gonna be placed somewhere is available that's convenient to the public and in the office of the city clerk. Uh, and one of the questions that I wrote down is, um, should we also say that it should be put online? Like, make it a requirement that all of these records are, are online? Or maybe not, I don't know.
Aren't they already online?
I think it's, it's a good idea.
I, 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 I think that some stuff is online. I don't know if everything's online.
Feel the same. I think it's a good idea, yes, put it online.
Okay, so I will, um, again, I'll review this with the city attorney, um, and online. And at the next, uh, meeting, we'll come back with some, some language, uh, and maybe, you know, there's some pros and cons to that. Uh, if so, let me know. Um, again, I think even if it's like, uh, in this case, whether it's my idea or anyone else's ideas, uh, I think it's important to just have those pros and cons, so that way, um, you know, when we're voting on it, we're really thinking about, uh, how it's gonna affect the next couple of generations. So, uh, I'll make sure that I'll talk to her, and if she says that there's some cons to that, I'll, I'll make sure I'll let everybody know and we can, um, you know, vote on that. Uh, so moving forward to that, is there anything else in rules and procedures that anybody wants to make changes on? No? Uh, moving on to?
I, one, one more thing, I'm sorry. I, I'm not finding housing committee on there.
Uh, housing?
One section, a standing committee?
Also, we haven't got the standing committees yet, but yeah, so.
We wanna do all the safety to the standings.
Yes, so I have a recommendation when we get there.
Okay, so, so we, we, yep, so we're there now. Okay, so I'll, I'll have you start.
For me?
He's gone. So you said you wanted to add what?
The safety committee to the standing committees. Because right now, the safety is not in the standing committee.
Okay. Um, what are the other, uh, members' thoughts on that? Councillor Plant?
So again, the question, what's the purpose of the standing committee? So they're not gonna do an ordinance, that's the ordinance committee, it's not a budget, that goes to the money finances. So I, if you're gonna say we're gonna have a public safety committee, which is made fine, what's gonna be the, uh, what's gonna be the mission? What's gonna be the, their role?
Oh, uh, if I might. Essentially, safety is always, it should be always the most important thing. Like, right now, we have this meeting because of the safety of our people and our health and our own. So safety should be as important as the money, as the ordinance, and as the, as the housing, and many other things. So essentially, safety should be one of the main, one of the main priority of the city because one of the things that we always keep on telling the people is that, you know, when we go up there and talk to people, oh, the public safety, we talk about the, a better life for the city of Lawrence, that, but everything come down to be, to be in a safe city and a safe environment, to be able to, the, give me one second.
So, I mean, so, so there's no dead time. Um, to add to that, uh, I think potentially, I mean, there is work to be done, right? Uh, so even if it's, uh, I think part of the aspects that the public safety committee does is, it's, goes, you know, in line with uh, overseeing, um, several parts of the administrations that are key to public safety. And I think putting it down on paper, uh, putting it down in the charter, uh, might not be, um, you know, might not be a bad idea. I think you just even, uh, doing the overview of the court, I mean, because of the public safety work that we did last term, you have the police department that's constantly putting out, uh, information around, uh, sort of like data, uh, every quarter, every year, creating a whole lot of transparency. I don't think that would have done, that would have been done at the public safety committee, uh, wasn't so, um, force wasn't the right word, wasn't so adamant uh, for something like this to be done. Um, and because of that, we're seeing other, um, you know, uh, departments that are, I mean, DPW is sometimes, you know, public safety related, some of the things that they do. But, you know, I think that transparency part was done because of the public safety committee, so I think definitely there's work to be done. Um, but outside of that, I think that, you know, it's, um, one of the things I wanted to put on besides the public safety part is that I, I wonder if there's a way to assist the ordinance committee into not having as much work as they have right now.
I have an idea.
Okay, well, councillor President, right ahead.
Yes. So, so I'll share the screen again, because I think it's easier if I do that, so we can all follow. Um, okay, so I am, I have a suggestion for not one, but two extra committees. I know, I know. Um, so the, the first four committees will remain as is, no changes to it. But when we look here, a committee on arts, culture, park, and recreation, to which shall be referred all matters important in the arts, culture, parks, and recreation in the city. So when we look at the ordinance committee, a big percentage of the documentations that are submitted to that committee involve those items that were specifically addressed. Um, and I think that it, it takes up a lot of time, uh, that could essentially be devoted to the creation of ordinances and reviewing ordinances uh, versus, you know, just approving, uh, festivals and walkathons and, you know, uses of the park. Um, you know, the focus should be on ordinances and uh, other major items in the ordinance committee. So I think that that addresses the, the primary concern. Uh, secondly, I think that the other, the, the, the other committee, it goes hand in hand with exactly what is happening today, and it will address a concern brought up by, um, councillor Rodriguez earlier. We, instead of being the public safety committee, uh, it will be a committee on public health, safety, transportation, and utilities, uh, to which shall be referred all matters which will need policy direction and oversight and make recommendations from reference to the general health and safety of the public, transportation, and utility concerns. Uh, and, and this comes about, you know, pretty much because of the situations we've had, uh, in the city. Um, recently with our Columbia gas crisis and, and now, you know, we have a coronavirus. I think that this is a committee that will essentially uh, assist in the policy direction. We need to create and, you know, have a, an actual establishment of an emergency plan for the city, uh, you know. I've seen other municipalities that have escape routes. If we have flooding in certain areas, and how do we actually improperly escape? Those are things that I feel that this committee could review, uh, or, you know, even initiate uh, to have a, a, a long-term plan for Lawrence. Um, so, but it won't, it will not only address public safety. I, I feel that, uh, when, uh, even though we've referenced that, that, when, when the coronavirus subject came, uh, the full council, it was referred to the public safety. Uh, because public safety doesn't encompass, there's only, you know, fire and policing. It encompasses a, a greater deal of, of issues that are not only those two. And, and that's usually what we think about. Oh, public safety committee, policing and fire. Well, no, I, there's a lot more uh-huh, when it comes to. So I, I think that that will address both concerns and it will alleviate a lot of work. At least the first one, the committee on arts, cultures, parks, and recreation will alleviate a lot of the work that is done in the, um, ordinance. that is done in the ordinance.
Any, any questions? Councilor Plant?
I like this a lot, I, I like the direction this is going in. I think that if we were to essentially take the role of the ordinance committee and split in two different directions like this, we won't, I mean, I used to be the ordinance committee chairman back in the day, so I, I know a little bit about the, the committee and having served as that chair. So it, it would really ease it up a lot, and I think that, what we could do, we could eliminate the ordinance committee and then have those other two. And within that, that takes care of the issue that Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. Peano are dealing with, which is, you know, no one disagrees that public safety is number one, and we all run on it, we all say it's the most important thing, but, but I think that this, this tact is the way to do it, where we can just focus a lot more of our energies and, and, and ease up the workload, if you will. I don't know how we were able to make any kind of reasonable decisions at 11:30 at night, where they got all these different things at the ordinance committee, it's so hard. It's, it's an awful lot to expect any one of us to be making important decisions late at night after a full day of work. And so if we split that up a little bit, it's going to be better for the residents as well, they're getting our best work and our best effort.
Thank you, thank you for being, thank you for being thinking about... Yes, thank you for being thinking in your modern chair of ordinance committee. I think this is well-taken, thank you, Councilor President, I know that was your idea, but I think that's the way it should be. So if he, everybody, I mean, every one of you, you notice, is the amount of work that we have to dealing in the ordinance committee is a lot. If you got to split it, so it's like Councilor Plant would say, you know, even the, the resident is going to appreciate it. One thing that I'm going to say, I am trying to connect, but I'm losing connection. So I think I'm not going to be leaving the meeting, because the line is breaking up, and that's why it's really hard for me to be kind of in the same page.
Okay. Alright, Council President, and if that's the case, oh, we still have quorum, so that's fine. Councilor Reyes, if we, we lost you? Yeah, thank you for being here, you can catch everything on the recorded on Facebook. Council President, could you send that, those, those tools for why?
The Council President can give me part of the committee now.
No, he doesn't need to, because we have quorum.
No, no, I could, but there's a quorum, so I wouldn't want to opinionate on it, but I could fit in, but I won't do it. I prefer to keep staying on the podium.
Council President, can you send that, that document to me, so I can make sure the, the clerk puts it down in our minutes, and we can share with the city attorney?
Of course, yeah, not a problem, yeah.
So, for you, Mr. Chair? I think that we should move forward with a positive feedback to the, to the, to the ordinance committee on this item. This is something that we, we really need in the city. It is going to be more focused from the council perspective, and it's going to be a lot better for the community, because we're going to bring more results, positive results, and results that are going to affect in a, in a, in a direct way to the constitution that we serve and, and the community there.
I, I, I would agree, Council Rodriguez, wholeheartedly. But what I would say is, when we started our first meeting, we said that what we wanted to present to the ordinance committee was essentially like one item, maybe, maybe there's more, but essentially one item with everything that we could all agree with, kind of send it forward, so that way, it's, you know, we're giving a positive recommendation on X, Y, Z, and then what we don't agree with, you know, potentially that, that goes through the, the ordinance committee regardless, you know, so instead of sending things piece by piece, I mean, we could do it that way, but I think what we talked about was sending them recommendations on the full charter, not just certain sections of the charter. Are you saying that?
No, 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 no. We agree upon sending items to the, to the committee, and that way they can be, they can start working, that we all agree. So if we all agree on this item, we can definitely send this out to them, and then they can, they can start looking into it. And then they're going to present a document that is going to be essentially the full review to the full council, but they can start working on, on items.
And I'll have Councilor Plant speak in a moment. The way I thought it was, was that we were going to basically be doing a lot of that background work for the ordinance committee, so that way, when it was presented to the ordinance committee, it was essentially that they were saying like, oh, items A through D were completely reviewed, you know, there's less work that they have to do, they can quickly vote on those, you know, on those things. Not that we're sending them things piece by piece, because then, when you send stuff piece by piece, potentially there's, there's an opportunity for these pieces to be lost in it being tabled until somebody else...
Essentially, essentially, I'm not saying sending piece by piece, but instead, section by section. We agree upon section one, two, and three, and it's all agreeable, we can definitely send those sections complete, those complete sections. If there is anything on those sections that are not 100% finished, and then we can keep the, the whole section here, and not send that section to the ordinance committee, but section one, we were talking about, we didn't agree upon everything, section two either, section three, nah.
Right.
But we finish one section, we can definitely send that section completely.
Sure, so section one and section two, there's no, no edits being made, so there's no reason to send anything to the ordinance committee on, on those two things. Section three, everyone brought up different points, some of them were well-liked, others weren't. There's some research that needs to be done, be brought forth at the next meeting, where we're going to be voting on those things. If you're saying, I'd be more particular, I personally, I believe we should just send an entire document, if the committee wants to send it by section, you know, it is what it is. If they want to send it by like, by line items, I would be, I, I, I don't think it should go that way, but regardless of that, Council, whatever you guys want to do, we will go with that.
I think by section makes more sense than just one document. What about if we failed to finish the whole, the entire charter by, by January 31st? And then they're not going to have any time to do anything.
Yeah, let's not think negative, Councilor Plant?
I, I agree with you, Council Chairman, I think that's the way to go, but I would also, the next time we have Councilor Reyes with us, she's the chair of the ordinance committee, we can certainly ask her, what's her preference, how is she best able to get the information that we have? And then she can, you know, I, I think she's probably going to want it as, as a whole, but maybe she thinks there's some merit to doing it peacefully, I don't know. But it's her committee that's doing it, and we're just trying to give her advice, so we're trying to be helpful. So whatever it is that we could be helpful with to her committee, I think we should follow her lead. I would ask her that question next time we have a meeting.
Okay, now that, that sounds good, and I, I would agree with that, let me just put that in the notes. One second, I'm sorry, where did I put it? Okay. Alright, is there anything, well, first of all, does anyone have a time limit? When it comes to this meeting, no, just making sure, because we could be here all night. So if, if somebody does have a time limit, let's just put that on there.
Well, I, I don't have necessarily a timeline, but I do subscribe to the fact that the longer it goes, the, I mean, obviously, we're sharper earlier, we're not as sharp later, so you're getting our best work early on, and our work as we continue is not going to be as sharp. So, I, as chairman, I would ask you to, just to factor that as you, as you, as you manage this meeting.
Okay, so we are at the two-hour point. Let's, let's go through, well, is there anything else on the standing committees?
I have something, not, not...
I'm, I'm sorry, Council, Council President, Council Plant?
I was just, housing's not on there, are we going to throw housing on there? That's been a standing committee, I'm not sure why that's not listed in the ordinance book.
It should be.
It's number four.
That I have, but this could be old.
The online version, it's, it's listed there.
Oh, it is, okay, never mind, that's good.
Housing, which will be referred, all housing and real property-related matters.
Goodness, alright.
So what we'll do is, we'll, I think Council President has some thoughts on standing committees, and then we'll move on to 3.6, and we'll see where we're at, if, if we need to pause for that moment and schedule another meeting, two weeks from now, or three weeks from now, to finish this, we'll do that. Council President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so it, it is actually an addition to a subsection, and I will add it, I will share the screen again. Okay, so it's a, it's a completely new addition to something in the charter that we don't have currently. So, and that comes from, you know, the whole approach of creating this committee, a not committee. So it will be an ad hoc committees, the city council shall provide for the establishment of ad hoc committees per order of the council president or request of three members of the city council. Committees will be assigned to review and make recommendations to the city council on a specific topic. Ad hoc committees will be automatically disbanded, open completion of that, its assignment or date previously established by the council president. And the ad hoc committee that I do recommend that we move on with is, a committee on charter review shall be established to conduct the annual review of the city charter. The committee should make a recommendation to the committee on ordinance and intergovernmental relations by December 31st of each year, ending with zero. That's pretty much what we're doing today, we're just putting it in, in, in writing. Once again, you know, I created this ad hoc committee temporarily, but I wish to see this be also long-term. The thought behind it is that if, if any of us at any given point considers that there's a particular subject that needs to be addressed in an ad hoc committee, because it encompasses multiple, I, you know, who knows what, what could, what we could be discussing in the future, we will have an opportunity to, to, to manage to... What I'm going to do, let me, I see Councilor Rodriguez trying to read it, so, is that better?
Yeah, that's definitely better. By the way, on this, yes, on that, on the three members, so that should reflect something related, if there is any changes on the future with the committee, if we're adding more councils, more councilor members, so instead of saying three?
Possibly.
They, whatever represent the committee or the city council members at a time, you know, and that will have one word, and not three, four, or five.
So, so my, my other suggestion is that, instead of potentially, let's say it's, there's nine of us, right? That maybe it should just be a vote of the council, not necessarily three members, because I can particularly, I can, you know, depending on the council, I can already see like 10 ad hoc committees, right? And I think that there has to be, you know, at the same time, some discretion has to be made as to how many ad hoc committees that there are. So that's just something to, to think about. My second statement, a question, is, is, do we already have the power to do that? I mean, like, this ad hoc committee was created, I feel like I've seen other ad hoc committees created as well.
So the, the council president does have the power to do it, but the, the situation is, once again, you know, I, I did it as a council president. I wish for this process to, to continue in the future, so that before the charter in particular, is always, has always been reviewed in the ordinance committee. But I think it makes more sense to have a committee, but it's also, all of the energy and focus is only on the charter. I created this, this time. Would it be done again 10 years from now? I do not know. So I think that if we are able to provide some guidance for the future leadership of the city, you know, it's just a way to, I, I believe that this is working out well this time around. You know, maybe something that we will want to revisit probably at the end of the session to see, hey, yeah, it didn't work well, so maybe we should do it again every 10 years. So the idea is that we, that we keep it, so there's already guidance provided as to how to proceed in this process.
Okay, I think I, I, I understand the point, are there any other questions or comments on this? Alright, it seems self-explanatory, Council President, if you can send, again, the wording of that, so I can make sure a minute taker, the city attorneys, that the minute taker puts it in the minutes, and also that the city attorney reviews it for our next council meeting, our next charter committee meeting. Next, we're moving forward, I think that was your last comment when it came to standing committees, so we are going to 3.6, city clerk, city attorney, board of assessors, council staff. Are there any sort of comments or questions on that?
The only thing that we should have on the charter is that the, the, our secretary should be appointed higher and appointed by the city council, not necessarily in the way it is right now, because the charter doesn't establish it, the mayor is the one that appoints that person to the city council. So, on the last time that we have this opportunity to hire the secret, the secret secretary that, you know, is for the city council, the mayor was, was, allowed us to, or allowed the council president to interview and hire. But if that's not the case, the mayor can definitely hire an executive secretary for the city council and have that person there as one of his, or hers upon tea. And that's not, that's not something that, I think that we should clarify on this section, and, and make sure that we say that the secret secretary for the city council is, is being hired and it's on the supervision of the city council, not necessarily the mayor, because one section of the charter says that all execr- secretaries of the city, it's, it's, it's hired by him.
Councilor Plant, you have any comments on that? Yeah, I'm you.
Sorry, no, I, I think, I agree in, in principle, I think the execution is going to be difficult, because we have a system in place right now, which has the mayor doing the, the personnel paperwork and the sign-offs, and there's a three, three-group organization that decides on hiring practices and who gets in. And it's, it's going to, it seems like a really easy thing to do, but it, it's more complex. I, I agree with it in principle, that we get a figured-out way to do that, because we should be able to hire our own person without any interference from the mayor, but the mayor's office and the administration has the, 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 the infrastructure, that's the word I'm looking for, the infrastructure to, to, to communicate and, and putting the things out to, for, for the, the classified ads, and all the, all the nuances that are required before a position can be filled, and filling a position, and then paying the person, and all the other stuff that I'm not all that familiar with. So, I support what, I support it, I just, I think it's, it's going to, it's a little more work than, than I think it, than it may, it may seem.
Okay, so this is, this is what I'll do, I mean, it seems like there's, there's, there's a consensus that this sounds like interesting. Let's ask, and potentially, so I'm going to have a conversation with the city attorney on this particular item. It, it might be Council Rodriguez that you might need to meet with her as well, just to see what the wording of it could be. Yes, Council Rodriguez?
Yes, well, we have on the podium tonight, the city council president that was able to hire the only confidential secretary for the last 27 years. I would like to ask him, how was the process, if it was difficult, or if it was something, something that it wasn't undoable, so, Council President, that's, that's a question for you.
Council President? Yes, yes. So let's, so let's have a...
Council Chair, I'm going to get a drink of water, that's okay with you?
So let's take one, two-minute recess?
I don't even need that, I need 15 seconds.
No, no, we have the city council president there.
No. So, we're taking them one-minute recess.
Okay, you sit around, please.
One-minute recess, guys.
We gotta make a motion to recess.
Well, we don't even have forum for that, so, okay. Alright, we're back, so, so Council President, so our question was asked, what I would say is, just be careful that you're, you're giving information and you're not giving an opinion on the matter. And if you're giving information, I think that's fine. Um, and as as long as it doesn't seem like you're trying to steer folks one way or the other.
Okay.
I don't think it matters, but just in case.
No, fair case. I think that you bring up a good point. I will, so I I want to separate my opinion versus the the factual grounds of the uh, the way that it's written right now, and you know, it was a lot of back and forth between the administration and the city council. Um, and especially some members of the city council who didn't think that the process was legitimate. Uh, and it's because the chatter is possibly unclear, uh, you know, to some folks as to how it should be. Um, the interpretation that was given to us by the city attorney at the time is that the mayor has the hiring authority for the for the confidential secretary. So, given that that was the opinion presented to the to our body, uh, that's how I proceeded, you know, I I went over to the administration. You know, the the mayor, uh, and I informed the mayor, hey, I have a deficiency here, there needs to be a confidential secretary hired. Will you be kind to post? So the the, you know, the the posting for uh the position was done. Uh, you know, and I asked him, uh, will you give me the opportunity to have some input in the hiring process for this person? Even though at the end of the day, you are the one who will determine who gets hired. So I didn't hire the the person that we have, or the council essentially didn't actually hire the person we have. It was the the mayor who hired this particular uh individual. And and I feel that the council should have a more legitimate weight in the hiring of our own staff. Well, I just gave you enough opinion there. That was not fashion. I apologize. Uh, but I okay, I think that the facts are probably already presented.
Yeah, yeah. So I so I would say, I I think it's, you you gave us a lot of information, and at the end of the day, we're not voting on anything right now. So, uh, what I'm doing is, um, I'm taking this line, I I wrote it down, um, giving it to the city attorney, sort of asking some general questions about some, uh, how something like this can be done, and uh, Council Rodriguez, I might, if this looks like it's gonna be um some significant work that needs to be done in order to shape the language, uh, I might ask you to sort of jump in there and sort of lead that charge and um so that our next meeting, either I, either myself or you could um uh sort of speak on that, just to see if like there's language in place that could uh potentially um solve, you know, the myriad issues that could come up. Uh, but on that, uh, would it be okay to also ask, I mean, one of the things that I think always comes up is that it depends who I ask, right? So if, uh, I remember when I started, uh, you know, someone in the administration, uh, like like in the city council, they were like, oh, uh, where, I think it actually might have been you, Council President, but um where I was told that we oversee the city clerk. Um, and then I was talking to someone in the administration, they were like, oh, no, like, where the city, where technically the boss is the city clerk? And I was like, oh, like this, like, you know, like, it seems like there's two different um uh views uh when it comes to this. And even though it's under the charter under the city council, um, I wonder if there's a way to make it sort of like clearer that the city council doesn't just elect, you know, appoint these two uh these two individuals, but that they also oversee um those offices. I don't know what your, Councilor Rodriguez, Councilor Plant, what your thoughts were on those.
I I agree one hundred percent. I think that we should make it clear, just say, hire, point, and supervise their work, bottom line.
Yes, Councilor Plant?
No, I, one of the things, one is that um we have the same the attorney, it's very sticky, we can never get it clear of it, it just maybe we can, we can clarify, you know, today or clarified this round, but the other thing is on this particular version is the board of assessors. I don't think that's under us anymore. I think that because of the uh is that, is that, by the way, your, in your provision, your online, is that taken out or is still in there? It's taken out. Still in there? Yeah, to be, to get that out of there is this kind of a cleanup thing, but I agree.
So this, so you're saying that the, so how is the board of assessors, was it removed through a, like a through an ordinance, or was it removed uh as a charter amendment?
It was, there was.
Ho- hold on, uh, so Councilor Plant?
No, there was a reorganization that was made. This was done with the overseer, uh, and and I think it was a uh I think it was through consultation with, with at the Sawyer Institute, the the UMass Institute that has, or UMass Boston or something, where they they came in and gave us a new op- a new um paradigm or reorganization, and we were essentially, I think, almost required to go ahead and and change that, this is back several terms ago, and move the board, board of assessors under the, under the under the um budget and finance director, which is all, and then into the mayor directly. So it, I think it left us, and I'm gonna ask the council president, who may have been there at the time, is that your recollection as well, Council President?
Yes, but not only that, I I had a conversation with our city attorney in reference, not not specific to the city charter, it was something about something else, and the board of assessors uh came up as part of it, but let me see if I can find it. Uh, I'm looking at an email here on my cell phone, so you bear with me. So the only two positions exist solely to assist the counselor, okay, so now let me go back. The only positions where the city council has any administrative functions are the council staff position covered on the section three point six E of the charter, clerk of the council, and all their persons, such as the confidential secretary. So essentially, the way that the chatter is written, we don't even have uh jurisdiction or like full power over the 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 city attorney and the city clerk. So, and and you know, the the conversation was not because I expected this to happen, uh, and this is an email that I received from her earlier today, so and that is the interpretation that our city attorney is giving us. So I think that it's important that we clarify um, you know, the language on on all of those positions as 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 it is.
That is very interesting.
I don't recall what Councilor Plant mentioned.
Cause, cause I, what I would say is that, you know, the city attorney before, our current city attorney um said that city council oversees the city attorney's office, and uh this city attorney, one was, uh, she was being hired, I am pretty sure that question was asked, cause I know I asked, I I asked it at one point. Um, cause I definitely wouldn't be for anyone that thought that the city council did not oversee. So if that uh opinion has changed, um, uh, yeah, uh, that's, that's very interesting. So, uh, all right, so I I'll make sure that I bring this forward uh on both items. Um, I think the other piece is the board of assessors. Um, like, uh, what do we do with that? Do we, do we have to?
So let me, if, through you, Mr. Chair, if you allow me, I will read, um, I will read something else in the email, it says, well, there are other positions which the city council elects, such as the city clerk and city attorney, as they perform function for the entire city council, and not just the city council, the administration of those two positions all under the mayor, therefore, so I will refrain from reading the rest of the, cause it 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 didn't involve this conversation, so I'm just gonna share that particular sentence. But yes, it is.
There is a separation of power at all, or what? I mean, if they change administration and based on city councilors, I don't know.
So I think that this, this will be a healthy discussion to continue to have, because we, you know, i- i- the interpretation varies from one person to the other, and I I I feel that we should have a language that is clear.
If if possible, can can you send, or at least send me just that that sentence that you mentioned, um, just so I can just, I'm I'm a more visual learner. Um, yeah. Uh, you know, it's, it's just, to me, it's just, it's not that it varies from one person to the other, it like, it varies from a year ago, we were told one thing, and now we're being told something else from that same individual. So, um, so yeah, so I think it's very important to clarify. I'll bring that up, and then I think the other part, uh, that Councilor Plant mentioned is the board of assessors, and essentially, the question is um, where do we move this to? Cause it sounds like we don't wanna
You eliminated. Yeah, I think you just cut it. I I don't think that's under our 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 review anymore.
But doesn't it have to be somewhere, though?
It's in the, it's in the ordinances. I don't have the ordinances here in front of me. As long as it's there, we're good.
No.
I believe it is there, cause we get a rework.
Okay, so, uh, do we have to de- delete this or move this? Uh, it's in the ordinance, maybe?
I'm pretty sure it is.
Okay, it's in the ordinance. Um, does it have to be in the charter? Okay. Um, all right, moving forward, let me see.
And, and Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
I just, you asked earlier about what it, what's a good time. I I just think batteries being what they are, ten o'clock is probably a good time for me.
And I, I would concur on that. Um, so I at least uh wanna get through three point seven, um, and I say um, once we get to three point seven, we we call, we call it an end um, uh, for the night. Is that okay with you, Council Rodriguez? Yeah, okay. Uh, so three point seven, uh, appointments to city offices and removals. Uh, so I had a a a comment on that, um. Okay, so, so one of the notes that I put down is, is there any way to put, to say how many days the mayor has to submit names? Um, yeah, um. So essentially, like, putting like a timeline on the amount of days that uh the mayor has to uh tell us who uh who he desires to appoint as department head. I'll read the entire thing. Uh, so, uh, section A appointments, the mayor should submit to the city council unless otherwise provided, the names of all persons he desires to appoint as a department head or director of any agency. The council shall refer all such candidates to the standing committee on personnel and administration, which shall investigate all such candidates for confirmation, make a report, or recommendation to the full council, not less than seven nor more than twenty-one days following such referral. A nomination of the mayor shall be confirmed by a majority of the council. Uh, the provisions of section three point H shall not apply. If the city council has taken no action, said appointment shall become effective on the tenth day following after the simple meeting of the Lawrence, the date name has been received by the city councils. So two of the things that I, uh, two of the thoughts, I didn't have any actual wording with this, was one, um, you know, the city council has a timeline as to when they should make the recommendation. Um, I believe that there should be also a time period for the mayor to make an appointment, like, you know, you can't just be there for a year, you know, without appointing, um, I don't know, uh, chief of police. Right? I think when it, when it comes to that, then um, I I think the city council needs to, you know, get involved. So that was, you know, one thing. And the second thing is, one of the things that I've noticed that it happens more with like the boards um, is that sometimes an appointment is being done, and it just so happened that the way things are scheduled, it's like impossible for the city council to meet within that period and take a vote, like for the, in order for the personnel committee to meet, and then the city council to vote on that, it's just, it's, it's really difficult for that to occur. Um, so I'm wondering if if it's possible, I don't know what the wording would be eat in this uh as well, but instead of saying um, that that if they haven't taken no action uh on a certain date, that instead it's um you know, by like the third meeting or the second, you know, full council, you know, something to that effect. Uh, Councilor Plant?
Sure, so a couple of things. One, I I like to streamline this, knowing that we've got, the the challenges you face are are well articulated. Um, I I think that if it's a department head, that that from the moment the mayor drops that name before the, on the city council agenda, that we get forty-five days to go ahead and get that complete. If not within forty-five days, there's a good reason why there is a limit, because you can see councils sitting on, sitting on, and sitting on potential appointments and not getting a go-through. So there's a good reason to have that. So we need to have some sort of decision of the forty-five days, or if we don't decide, then it goes automatically. That would be one recommendation. The second one, and and this is again, and and if you look in the um deals with the temporary appointments or the of the of the mayor, I have in the, in your packet of of information that that is a part of the agenda, if you look at it, I I I have a a hundred and twenty-day acting appointment, and then uh having them be um temporarily extended by ninety days only with the approval of the city council. So I put that together in two thousand fourteen, it's been six years, uh, but now's a good time to reroll that out. So, um, um, I think that kind of touches upon, Mr. Chair, and what you are discussing with respect to having some sort of, not having this thing kind of meander around a little bit.
Okay, um, I'm gonna take a look at that. I only have in front of me the um, uh, the agenda, uh, but I'll scroll through and take the wording from that, and um, I'll submit that, so that way in our next meeting, um, we can take a look at that. Council Rodriguez, any comments on that?
I guess saying that, you know, three point seven, it's it's a, it's a very important, that has been very conflicting and uh and had brought up multiple uh, multiple set of opinion to our city council. I think that we should sit down on this whole three point seven section, uh, go through, read it, and and probably be able to present something more abroad uh to the, to that, uh, to the ordinance or to the next discussion. At this point, I won't be able to to comment on it, but I would definitely would like to. Uh, I'm definitely tired today. I'm I'm I'm, it's been a long day.
All right, um, so I mean, I, there's def- there were definitely some other things that I wanted to talk about, um, on that, so, uh, it, listen, so I know it's been a long day. Um, for some of us, we've been in uh, uh, two different um subcommittee meetings. Um, if there's a motion to adjourn, um, let's do it, and at, uh, you know, let's try to meet, um, you know, we can schedule, let's try to schedule right now our next uh April meeting. I mean, we already have a lot, from everything that we've discussed, a lot of work to be done for the next month.
Second, whatever Geo says in the background, I think it's a great idea.
Um, so let's look for a date, I would say maybe after the fifteenth, so maybe there's a possibility to meet in person. What what is it, tw- April twentieth?
Is that, that's, um, I believe that's page for today.
Okay, um, the twenty-first?
I believe it's a regular city council day. First and third.
Okay, uh, let's, twenty-second is Earth Day.
I'm free that day.
Council Rodriguez? No?
Not a good day. Okay, those are, that day, you probably have something happen and and would be tired.
Okay, uh, the twenty-third, Thursday, twenty-third.
Um.
All right, um, April the twenty-seventh?
The twenty-third could work for me.
Okay, Council Rodriguez?
But it's spring, it's spring vacation week, but who knows what schools are dealing with right now because of Corona, so it's hard to to know.
Yeah, it's hard to predict. If anything, we change it later, later on down the, down the road.
All right, I mean, if you guys want, we can just do April twenty-seventh. It's a Monday, same Monday as before. Does that work? Council, yes?
Yeah.
Uh, is it, is is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right.
Discussion? Uh, tomorrow night, we've got another full city council meeting, correct, Mr. President? I can't hear you.
Can you repeat the question again, please?
Uh, then tomorrow night, we've got a full city council meeting, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Are we doing it remotely, or are we gonna be in the council chambers?
We will be doing the meeting remotely, because we cannot gather, we cannot have more than ten people gather at this point.
Okay, and then you and I can talk, we're gonna, just because I have you here, um, budget and finance will be on Wednesday night. And is this easy to do, this whole apparatus? Can this, is this, how do I?
Yeah, it's extremely simple. Uh, I can walk you through prior to the meeting. Uh, you know, as you can see, just by by a, by this scenario, we have seven people locked in, right? Seven of us, Councilor Rodriguez, yes, that will have been eight. Uh, just having two members in the audience, that will give us ten people in a room. Um, which is not be feasible. So that's why we're, we're gonna transition to this until further, you know, anything changes. Everything has remained public, we have, so I'll walk you through the process, it's very simple. Uh, I'm gonna try to
More public than regular meetings. More public than regular meetings.
I I think it has been more, a lot more public. Um, people have a lot more access, because we're. You know, we have, um, the only thing that I wish for us to do is, uh. Uh, like, when, when it comes to the full council, a regular full council. I will need to figure out public participation. I wouldn't wanna take that away from the residents. That's the only thing that I have not been able to figure out with this system as it is.
Can you, uh, can you unmute the mic for people?
You can. So, uh, so Counsel President, so my message, if you ever wanna talk about this, let me know. I used to run, um, you know, like, 50, 60-person, um, like conference call meetings type of things. Uh, through, uh, through go-to meeting. Um, it's possible. It it just requires people to, like, someone to be on the computer. Uh, you know, uh, the person would like, there's a button that they can click, saying, I have a question, or raise their hand. Uh, and then the note, whoever it is, goes in there, hey, like, we're gonna, you'll be up next. Uh, and can allow them to speak for however long you want, and then you can, you can mute them when the time, when the time is done. So it's possible that we can talk afterwards about that.
Uh, if it. That's one, one thought, and I'll I'll take your, your, all all your, the information you could provide me on it. Another thing that I, that I thought that is different from the way we do it. Uh, so you should rewrite their comments, right? So if it does not become viable, and let's say for instance, if someone is not part of the the, this format. Uh, and they're watching via YouTube, right? We're not basically looking at YouTube right now. Uh, maybe they could just simply write the comment, and we could read it out loud into the record. You know, uh, you know, I could ask the clerk, even myself, just read it out loud in the record. So it it shows, you know, that there was public participation via an email or, you know. Just looking for avenues, yeah, something, I don't know, just looking for avenues to ensure that we are able to maintain it. Uh, if we're unable to meet in person, you know.
Right. I I I think, um, them submitting, people submitting, uh, to the council, a, you know, whatever. Like a paragraph with their name and address, uh, is different than, uh, YouTube or Facebook. Uh, just cause they don't necessarily have to verify who they are, uh, which might make their comments. If if you were to say that every, cause it's either either or, right? If you're gonna read every comment, then you have to read every comment. What if they, you know, they're potentially, they're saying some bad stuff, then now you, you're put in the situation where you have to decide. Whether that comment is viable or not. So just something, uh, something to think about.
Yeah, something to think about.
Uh, but again, thank all of you guys, uh, for being at this meeting. I think we're now at the vote to, uh, adjourn. Counselor Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor LaPlante?
Yes.
Uh, I also vote in, uh, in affirmative. Thank you all. Have a good night, and we'll talk soon.
Great, goodnight.